Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Stickley.
Here.
Mr. Blair.
Here.
Mrs. Hannah-Hand.
Here.
Mr. Sankar.
Here.
Mr. Mucker.
Here.
All members are present. The purpose of this special meeting is called and per our agenda is to consider an ordinance approving the detailed financial plan for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mayor, I'm assuming you all would like to give us an overview?
April, and we'll be back up in a minute. She'll go through it with you. A lot of its numbers, as you remember back at the committee, the whole meeting, as far as what we was going to propose, we had discussed what we were going to propose, the contract, contractual issues with employees, retirees, health insurance, and 911. Those are all things that we told you and you knew about going in last week. There's been a lot of conversations come up lately over contractual issues. There were some that came up at the last meeting, and we are in the process of doing the research on that. After being questioned about it, we looked into the amount of overtime that was accumulated, and a couple of people just, it went skyrocket. It was just out of sight. So, we're doing the research on that to find out how and why that happened, and we're going to put a stop to it. We're going to rectify that problem. The other issue is, is we know that there's been some discussion about reducing costs. In one of the departments, I've discussed with the chief, we're going to be looking at reducing rank through contractual obligations, and we are going to move on that as strongly as we can. That we feel as though, and the chief feels, with more people on the street. So, those are the issues that came up the last time that we will be discussing down the road. And, of course, those are contractual issues, and it can't be addressed until those contracts are up. Being open, the city is in negotiations with the police now because there was some long delays. The Wage Committee had some issues, and so there was some long delays getting that action, getting that in order, and the process has begun through those negotiations. And, as always, we will keep you informed. We will also keep you informed on what we come up with on these, the amount of overtime build-up. The other issue is, is that, and I know the chief is present, we have to look at, and this is not going to be popular, we have to look at our city first, and we have three people assigned out of our city. We have to review that. There are other agencies that have more people and more money, and we have to review that, and why should we, should we continue, and if so, why? So, these are all situations that we will be addressing. We will also be addressing issues down the road with the Fire Department and reduction of contracts and everything else. So, these, as you remember, most of the suggestions from the council last year, or last week, were contractual issues. And so, you know, with contracts in place, there's not a lot we can do now. Can it be addressed down the road? Absolutely it will. But, you know, and I think Mr. Sankar said, and others have said, business as usual can't do it anymore. It's just impossible. It cannot continue on. We're going to have to look at ways of reducing our cost and yet maintain our city services, which is a trick. But, business as usual, we can't do it anymore. I told you at that last meeting that one of my big things that I was in support of was 911. I firmly believe in 911. With that said, I know that it's an expense item and it needs to be looked into. I want to do that. And so, we look at that and say, what can we save? Can we save anything? And what does it do to the residents? So, it's a cost-effectiveness way of looking at it. And anybody who knows me, I've always taken the position, 911 stays under, you know, under all circumstances. Well, we can't do that anymore. And if I'm going to change, other people are going to have to learn how to change. We just can't do it anymore. So, and basically, as far as I'm concerned, the three items we have is the three items we're going to look at. But, everything is going to be on the block, whether they're in this plan or not. April will go through it with you in a minute, but down the road, this plan will change. Things will be added, things will be deleted, but there's nothing permanent. It will change down the road. So, any guy in questions? Fine. If not, April can proceed with her presentation.
Ladies?
I'm going to let Anna Mary take the lead, and I will pass these back to the audience as the copy.
Thank you.
Of course, that makes sense.
Of course it makes sense.
That's Maloney's fault.
All right. You'll have to let me know if you can't hear me, because I know I have a hard time when we're in here and the air conditioner is on, so. In front of you is the attachment for your ordinance. This is basically the same, except now this is a booklet, and it gives some boilerplate stuff you have to do for a financial recovery plan, which we'll go through. And then, it lists the assumptions, and most of these assumptions have not changed since the last two times it's been presented to you. The first time, we talked about it two weeks ago. I think the mayor brought it last week. There are a few number changes, and that has to do with debt, and I will go over those. So, the bottom line did change, but that was some things that after we had some talks today and we looked at some stuff, we were like, that, there were some changes that needed to be done to reflect what the actual intent of council and the city is. So, I'll go over that. So, in this booklet, you have what the objective of the financial plan is, which you have to have that in place within 120 days of the first commission meeting, which is this Saturday, but the commission meeting is tomorrow. The other things it talks about in here is your budgetary process with the appropriations. A lot of that is a higher revised code. Also, it's stating, you know, basically, we're going to keep things in line with the recovery plan and keeping that in mind, and when appropriations should be passed, and then the recovery plan is in Appendix A, which is attached. Also goes through what the format of the appropriations will be, and we have talked to the city auditor and the mayor about several of these things, and even down to the Treasurer's Department. Estimate revenues will be projected no later than September 1st and presented. That's just good budgeting process. On or before September 15th, and this is new for you guys, because this doesn't really happen, each year, all department heads and all other branches of GOMA shall submit their department budget to the Finance Committee, City Auditor, and the Mayor. That does not mean they will get what they ask for. It is a process of showing needs and wants and finding out what has to happen and making those hard decisions. But, that is a process that department heads should be involved with, and that is something we will work on as we go forward. On or before November 1st, the Finance Committee, City Auditor, and the Mayor shall submit to council, like a first look at appropriations at the legal level control, basically. On or before December 1st, this should really be completed with budget hearings, basically, and then it needs to come to the financial supervisor, which is really me and April from the State Auditor's Office. What we're going to do is make sure that before you approve it, it is in line with your recovery plan and that it is in compliance. We're here to make sure that you are following what you're supposed to, so it doesn't get to the commission and they go, "What are you doing?" That's not going to work. We don't want to get to that point. That's what our job is. We're supposed to be the liaisons between you and the commission. Does that make sense? Okay. And then, the commission will have to review it, and then they're going to have to pass it after you guys pass it. And that goes for any changes to the appropriations. The other thing listed in here is that the book, the monthly books for the city will be completed and reconciled by the 15th day of the month. Now, that is happening. I did talk to Chuck Down in the Treasurer's Office that that can happen, and that's going to be, which it already is, coming to us monthly. We're going to review it as financial supervisors. We're also going to be presenting that to the commission eventually. We're just not quite there yet, because we've been more concerned about the recovery plan. Okay.
Mr. Maloney, that happens now, doesn't it? That's what I thought, in both your office and the auditor. Thank you.
Okay. So, the next part, which is page four, is when we start getting into the assumptions. The assumptions are what drive the numbers. This is what we think will happen as council, a city, and departments moving forward. This is what the numbers are based off of, and these are the major points of discussion within the recovery plan. Okay? So, as you go through here, there's nothing, I don't think, that's new. I mean, I've talked about, well, other than hotel tax, which was discussed last week. You're getting a new hotel coming in. That should bring in revenues. The estimates that actually, three departments actually gave me was pretty similar, so we use those going forward, and you'll see that increase in the general fund, just like you did last week. Income tax, last week, that also went up for 1% growth from 2018 through 2021. Again, not a change. We're just telling you in an assumption that's what the forecast is showing, recovery plan. All the other revenues were held constant. I know I've had major discussions in here about personal services. It's all by the union contracts. In 2017, we had make-up payments. OPNF, I can tell you today, the last check was sent to OPNF to pay all your back pension payments to Ohio Police and Fire. I confirmed that today. Now, I haven't confirmed if they've received it, because it went in the mail last week, but it was sent to Ohio Police and Fire Pension. So, that's in there. All the buybacks, for example, that were owed last year, plus this year's been paid. Those are in the 2017 numbers, and then whatever the union agreement stated on their rates, step increases and those things have been built in going forward. There's no base increases right now. There's no health insurance premium increases. We do not know what that cost will be at this time, so that was not increased going out. And then, the 2% on the workers' comp. Other expenditures, we've talked about this too. It's a 1% increase, 2018 through 2021. 2017, we have payables that are being paid from prior years that have increased some of the expenditures in '17 compared to other years. Debt, in each of the departments, anything that is new or was in your appropriations, that's where the new stuff is. So, ambulance, police cruisers, public works truck. Now, in the ones that you've seen, we've had cruisers in there, and it was too many. And one of you here actually asked me about that, and we went back and looked at that, and that was true. And then, the truck for the public works wasn't down on public works, so it was kind of a movement between, but it was still, we had more costs in here with too many cruisers than what we needed overall. So, it was three vehicles we needed, plus an ambulance, which is in EMS. So, one of the changes is public works, or city garage, I think, has debt principal interest for a truck that's needed, that we've been told about several times, and then two cruisers for '17. That's all based upon the commission approving debt for those items, because they have to approve any debt. And then, the ambulance, which has been in there for the EMS. Everybody under, that's the first change. Page five, this is where the mayor was talking about 911, retiring health insurance, and this is all reviews that are going to be happening, and current employee health insurance costs. There's not been any numbers assigned to that, because we're still in the review stage and trying to see what the overall savings or costs, or whatever the case may be, to the city might be. Then, we get into the other funds. The street fund, I don't know if the advance that was in there, that you guys said you don't want to repay, that was the change we had. It was still showing paying that advance out in the street fund, and that should have been out, because you guys had expressed that you are not repaying the advances. You're going to do a forgiveness for all advances. Is that correct? Okay. So, that was a change that we were doing just now. All the funds, and I could, we've talked about these, all the funds, the state highway, when we first came two weeks ago, were all positive. Okay? So, the only change that happened was we took out the advances for the street. State highway was negative when I first came here and talked to you. Do we remember that? Okay. So, when the mayor came last week, there were talks, you have a permissive MVL fund that could take on some of those expenditures, because they're broke. And we looked at it to see if those expenditures could be sustained by that fund, because we don't want to move expenses from one fund and cause a negative problem in another fund. That defeats the purpose. So, with what we know right now, without a capital improvement plan in place, and me knowing what you need for streets and what kind of grants you could get to help with that, that fund could sustain the extra expenses that are now in the state highway fund. Does that make sense? Yeah, basically, we're shifting, but we wanted to make sure that fund could handle it. The only other change that happened from last week, because I already talked about the vehicles, was on page, when we're in Appendix, page, I believe it's five of 14. The debt service here, this is from your old 34 bond retirement fund. We went back to look to make sure that the principal interest paid was reflected in here to match the amortization schedule. It did not. This wasn't a huge change. I think it changed a couple of thousand dollars overall by the end, but this now reflects what your actual payments for principal and interest will be. And that was on me, because I didn't double-check that, so. Yeah, it's on the 2006 GO refunding bond, is what this one is. This is the one that was in the bond retirement fund. We closed the bond retirement fund, because transfers were paying for this only, no property taxes. So, this is one of the three funds that were closed and put as a depart, or pulled into the general fund. Does that make sense? So, now, the recovery plan is a little different, bottom line, than what was presented last week. But, those are the only changes that have been made, other than, you know, the assumptions are now written down that show where these numbers are coming from and how they, how we've, you know, arrived at those. Any questions on what I've just talked about? I'm sure you have other questions, but just what I've talked about. Yeah, the bottom line's on page five or six of 14, for the general fund only.
And I will caution you that just because the general fund on this piece of paper is showing a positive balance at the end of 2020, like Anna Mary said, this document's going to change as information comes available. If you have a big increase in your health insurance costs, it can wipe that out pretty fast. So, again, just know, this is going to change as information comes available, and it'll change every year. It can change multiple times within a year, but it's just our job as financial supervisor to make sure that the forecast you have is complete with the best information and the best intent of the city at the time.
If I may, we had that conversation today, and they showed it to me. Look, and I'm not a spreadsheet person. When I looked at it and I seen a balance, you know, in the black by that kind of money, I thought, "That's not good," because people would just look at that and assume that that's money. Well, we're going, in three or four years, we're going to have an excess of money. That's not going to happen. I mean, and that means if you don't buy anything, you don't do anything. And so, I think it's a dangerous precedent to take this as a good news, and, boy, in these so many years, we'll be in. No, that's not true. And it almost goes back to when they forecasted money coming in from a belt, and it didn't, and it tanked. So, I think this is, and April said that she would address that tonight. I just, you know, that came up today, and you know me, not being an accountant. I looked at that and I thought, "That's not good." So, try to keep that in mind. If somebody says to you, "Well, you're going to be in the black by that time," that's not true. It's not going to work that way.
Questions? Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So, I wanted to raise a potential change that I wanted to see made to this document, especially after our last conversation on Wednesday. We had talked about, you know, the mayor passionately said that, you know, we've got, we can't afford the contracts currently as they are, and frankly, I agree with the mayor. And so, I personally believe that we as a body, we as a council, should not be approving a fiscal plan that has, you know, in 2019, 2020, and 2021, in the new contractual period, we shouldn't be approving a plan that has exactly, I guess, the current state of how we are now, except just with the step increases. I personally believe that we need to reduce some expenses, and in particular, in the Fire Department Personnel Services Key and the Police Crime Control Personnel Services Key. And I believe that we should reduce those, and I believe that we should put that money that we reduce it by into the street fund. I believe that we should set it aside so that finally, you know, after 10-plus years, we can start actually repaving streets with money that doesn't just come from grants that's limited to certain parts of the city. So, I personally would like to see us amend this and reduce the Fire Department Personnel Services Key by 7%, and I'd like to see the Police Department Personnel Services Key reduced by 3%. And so, doing that brings a total of $664,000 that we didn't have before, each of those are in the first year, 671, the second year, 680, and third year. And, you know, again, I just, I want to make this plan look as realistic as I believe that this council is, and I, right now, I don't believe that this council would approve in 2019, 2020, or 21, if we were all still here. I don't believe that we would approve the appropriations showing, what it's showing here. And so, like I said, I'd like to see it changed, and I personally would like to hear what any of my other colleagues have to say. Thank you, Madam President.
Mrs. Hannah-Hand.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a very hard decision, and very hard decisions to make. I have to agree with James. I think we need to look at the future, budget for the future, and see what changes need to be made now, not just, okay, we can change this later, but at least work toward it all. So, I would just like to say that I do agree with Mr. Bonzel.
Mrs. Stickley.
This is more of a question. Is the health insurance included in the Personnel Services Key expense?
Yes.
Yes. And the only way, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding through this whole process is that we can't make changes to personnel costs or insurance costs, because that would not be an accurate forecast. We don't know what those costs are going to be. And I think if we, the mayor said he's going to look at the contracts. When we make those changes, we can then go back and make changes to the financial recovery plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's why they're not in here to begin with?
That's correct. The Personal Services expenditures, as we've talked about before, are based on your current union contracts in place. From my history with this city, typically, there has been some times where you have gone without a new contract in place, and you're, basically, your police and fire personnel have worked off of the old contract. So, we have built that in as carrying forward, and again, I can't get into, you know, it's not our job as financial supervisor to negotiate contracts or any of that. That's something the city will have to do, but just putting numbers in here now is based absolutely on what we know, not what we think. Okay? So, when contracts are renegotiated and there are items, like you said, Mr. Bonzel, a decrease, those are things you will take into account when you're negotiating those contracts again.
And once those contracts are approved, then those numbers will be reflected back into the financial plan.
Correct.
But, until we get those numbers, we don't know what they are.
I would be hesitant to make huge changes. Now, I will say this, you will see this document again this fall, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Donna Ramirez, is that the health insurance will go out for bid again, I believe in November?
October 1st.
October, November. So, at that point, you know, we'll have some good numbers as far as what we think an increase or decrease in health insurance is going to cost, and we will modify this recovery plan accordingly.
And let me say this, too. I and I totally understand where both of you are coming from, but right now, if our cost is personnel, that's what, we don't have a product. Our product is service, and our personnel is what do it. And it's not a matter of saying that they're not doing, we just got to the point where we have to lower our operating costs, and everybody knows that. So, we've got to do it in the right fashion. Also, keep in mind that during discussions, the desire may be to do this, but like, we're going to have to, we have to somehow get the Financial Commission to understand this, that we are not the regular run-of-the-mill business. We are governed by the state statutes, 4117, you know, governs the, you know, the contract negotiations. So, we have to negotiate in good faith and then look at, I've told you this, I don't know how many times, look at this as trends. That's why we have a labor person look at it. What can we survive with, with an arbitrator? I, you know, everybody can have these good intentions, but the fact of the matter is, we have to follow the law, and we have to look at, you know, what we think we'll get through, and yet treat people fairly. That's, that's the dilemma. And you all live here, same as I do, and I know you face these people, and they, you know, they don't like you, and I understand all that, but we have to change. It's just, you know, we've negotiated, we've changed our medical insurance, we've done a lot of things, you know, to lower our costs. That doesn't mean we stop, but, you know, if the powers-to-be, you know, can tell you that, then that's fine. But, I just want to let you know, that's been our method in the past, and that's what will be our method now. Is it popular? No. But, right now, I'm paid to do a job, you're paid to do a job, they're paid to do a job. So, we have to look at the long-range survivability of the city. I had, I've told this story, and I'll let it go. I had one individual in the bargaining unit say to me, "We'll gain nothing if we put this city out of business." And so, I think, you know, there's some, you know, everybody's starting to adjust to this situation. That's the only way we're going to survive.
Mr. Blair.
Yeah. Now, to go off of what James was saying, to look at the numbers now and to project that stuff all right now is great, and I agree with looking at that now. But, I think what they have in the financial plan, the reason why they have that, is that is what can be forecasted for right now. The changes that you're proposing can't be forecasted into right now, because it, contracts aren't up, so they can't be negotiated. So, until that point, we can't do anything. But, I'm looking at what you've been working on right now, and I would definitely like to discuss that and move forward.
Mr. Sankar.
Yeah, I mean, I understand where everybody's coming from on, as far as, you know, picking a random number and reducing it by a certain percent. The difficult thing here is that we need to submit a forecast to the committee that's based on actual numbers that we have today. And if we submit a forecast that we take 7% out and 3% out, or pick any percent out, and they get that, and they approve it, but then come negotiation time, we're not as successful as we would like to be, and then we go back to them and say, "Hey, we weren't able to get this percent out. We need to, you know, raise this by this much here to be where it was before." The commission's going to have a rather difficult time, or a harder time, judging from the people that are sitting on it, approving any increases in personnel costs versus if we came back at that time with a decrease in personnel costs, I think they would look at it very favorably at that point in time and say, "Hey, you did a well of a job, you know, reducing your personnel cost by X amount." But, if we submit something on a hypothetical, and then it doesn't come true, then we have to explain to them why we want to increase the personnel costs on our projected expenditures, where I think that wouldn't go over too well with that committee at that point in time. So, I think that the numbers here are based upon, as well as we all know, based upon as things are today, with the anticipation of things going down in the future. You know, the numbers that are, you know, the ending numbers, you know, it all, you know, it looks nice, you know, okay, like the mayor said, you know, 2020, oh, look, we're in the, we're in the black. Quite honestly, if there's any way to get into the black in 2019, that should be the goal. You know, 2020, you know, it looks like on paper, we could possibly be creeping out of this thing. But, the goal is, is to continue on to, through negotiations, through looking into some of the other the other combinations of services, to try to reduce these costs and come up with a better fiscal plan than what's here even by a lot sooner date. I don't think '18 is going to be realistic because we only have six months to go in '17. But I would like to see that '19, in '19, that number go down, you know, far more than what it is now. And that would have to come through, those negotiations and that, and hopefully that can come down a lot quicker than, than it is now. So I just think based upon where we're at now and what, what they were told to do by the commission and what, I think really, I don't know that we can pick a random number and reduce it like that without, you know, some kind of hardcore facts to back that up with, be the only thing.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So, and I definitely appreciate all of my colleagues and the mayor's comments and of course, you, Madam President. So, you know, the proposal that I have on the table here, it's not, I'm not trying to say we're going to cut in these departments and then go ahead and spend the money. We're really, we're holding that money and we're going to hold it in a streets type of fund. Either it's in the general fund, we're going to create, there'll be a streets key, or there will be, it'll be in a transfer to the street fund key. And it was my understanding, just from my discussions with the auditor states representatives today, that if the mayor would have proposed exactly what I'm saying right now, the mayor would have proposed it to us and said, hey, this is what we're projecting, this is what we're going to go after because we're going to go after changes, that we could theoretically pass a plan on that. I mean, the fiscal commission can then consider that, hey, they have that money in the streets key or for streets. I mean, it's not like they're touching it and pushing it anywhere else. It's not like they're trying to spend it right now. It's just, it's kind of sitting there. It's kind of my understanding that that might be allowed. And so I'm actually still going to, there's going to be, I am still going to push to have, I would still insist that we do this. And if we do have a fiscal plan that's going to fund everything at the current spending levels and signal to everybody that, hey, we are open for business, we're Norwood, we're going to keep spending at this level, even though I know that's not the reality, it's kind of seems like, I don't want to even put it in this plan that we're going to do that. Yeah, I'm personally going to vote no on the plan. So I definitely understand that you're all's, you know, what you're all are saying there, but, you know, I can't forecast myself voting yes on a appropriations that are the levels that are in this plan. And I know that it's, you know, they've made this based on assumptions that are there, but I'm personally going to be voting no on this. Thank you.
Can I speak?
Absolutely.
I believe that my comment as far as the forecast, yes, the mayor could put that in, but I did stress about the Personal Services are based on current union contracts. And so I want to make that clear. That if, my comment was to Mr. Bonzel, if the mayor had submitted a plan that talked about this, you know, allocating money to the street fund and you could transfer, yes, that is acceptable. But I did caution about changing Personal Services to not match the current contracts in place. I just want to make sure I'm clear and that you understand. Okay.
And as far as I go, if you want to place it on me, feel free. I'm not, no, no, go ahead. I mean, that's, that's, I'm a, I'm a big boy, I can handle it. And I won't back away from a thing. I would never put anything, I'm going to decrease this by 3 percent or decrease that by 5 percent in personnel keys before we even negotiate. And if somebody would expect that, me to do that, I can tell you right now, I just won't. If, if you do that, then, then you're, you're way out of line. You go into negotiations, like we always have, we talk to council, get their guidance first, and then we go into it. I'm not going to announce two years before a, the negotiations, well, already in negotiations, oh, by the way, guys down the road, my plan is to cut, no, that's, that's not the way it works. I won't do it. And if that's what you want in the plan, I won't put it in there.
Yeah. And my comment, I appreciate it.
Excuse me, Mrs. Hanahan?
I just wanted to say that the numbers weren't random. And I just want to say, as I talked to James, and what they had gone on was the forecast, the numbers were forecasted for 1920 and '21, the contracts were up. And, I mean, I, I understand, I understand the numbers, not the contract, they don't have the same one. So now I understand why that needs to stay that way at this point. Why, you know, I think that Mr. Bonzel's just trying to, I think, myself, we're just trying to find ways to make it better and so that it's done in a fair and accurate manner. And the numbers weren't random. I believe the numbers were bringing the police and fire department numbers closer together.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your last comment. Can you speak up?
Was to bring the police and fire numbers closer together.
Mr. Blair?
Yeah. Going off of what we've been discussing, I, I could be wrong, but I think the reason why the current contract and everything is in this financial plan is that they have to go based off what is forecasted for right now. So that way, within five years, they can then, you know, produce money, you can make money that way. But they can't put in right now a hypothetical thing that we would all love to discuss. And when contracts are up, I would love to visit these numbers and see what we can do from there. But until then, I don't think you can just go off, off that without having it concrete. Like, for example, all the debt and stuff that we paid off. They couldn't just say, ah, well, we'll wait and we'll assume for that debt to eventually be paid and then we'll forecast that way. No, we had to pay it so in that way, the plan can make sense.
Can I respond to the mayor's?
Excuse me. You don't have the floor.
Okay.
There was a question asked. May she answer it, please?
I don't know if I got the whole question, but, all right. So the contracts go through, except for police, because it's still in negotiation, through 2018. So those numbers can't change from '17 to '18. I think everybody understands that. So going forward, what, what had to be projected is we look at what has happened in the past, we look at intent of council and city to see what is wanted and intended to be done going out further. The third, fourth, and fifth years are higher because they could change tomorrow. So what normally happens is you guys are normally not getting contracts done by the end of, when they're over. So usually the old contracts are running into the new years. Does that make sense? Okay. So if that's the case, then we're running on the step increases still because those are still in there. I have not seen a union, and they could be out there, I'm not seeing a union agreement without some sort of step increases. Now, those have been modified at places, I will say, so it may change, but I've seen step increases at least in most, I, I've not seen one that. So to say no step increases, I would come back at you and say, is that really truly your intent as a whole-body majority vote? Anything that has been discussed with us, it's, is this truly your intent? Because right now, the, the loans and stuff that have been built in for the trucks and stuff like that, you guys have not approved that yet and that would have to go through the commission. But the intent, because nobody's argued with that point, as far as I know, when we've, we've talked about these, that has to be done because there's cruisers that are needed, there's trucks that are needed, there's ambulance stuff that needs, I mean, you still have to operate and you still have to have equipment. We can't let everything just go, you know, what's the best word? I'm going to use a word.
Elan.
There you go. I'll let him say it. So, suplop was what I was thinking, but that one's good either. We can't let all that go and then when we're trying to get you out, you have all these expenditures for capital improvements, which is why I kept saying a capital improvement plan, that not just only is streets, it's also vehicles, repairs to buildings, things like that. Those are all things you're going to need in five years. And to be honest, none of that's in here either. So that's other stuff that really needs to be built in, which comes back to, okay, there's more needs and expenses, revenues may come in better, they may come in worse. You know, you guys aren't even at the income tax level you were, I think, 10 years ago. I mean, not even close. And so that's a huge hit and, and living on the means that you have now, then you have to look at both sides of the story. Do you need to look at that stuff? I'm not going to sit here and say, no. 7 percent, I will tell you that I have never seen that here or 3 percent. So I would question the true intent of the entire council to prove that. If the entire council or majority would happen to agree upon that, I think that's something we can discuss. I think you're going to have, I don't know if that can be done tonight, is what I'm going to say. And that's totally up to you guys. I'm just here to help provide assistance as a financial supervisor. But if the intent is truly not there to do that, I don't, I can't put that in and say that this is a viable plan when we go to the commission tomorrow. That's, that's a fair statement on our part. So even the things that are listed as things to be looked at, the reason there's zeros because there's things that need to be looked at. Like, we'll take 911, for instance. We could go in right now and say, all those expenditures are gone. We don't have a contract cost, but somebody's got to take you on. It's going to cost you somehow, some way. I have no idea what that is yet. That's something that needs to be looked at. And then you guys live here. It is a service versus cost thing. So ultimately, April and I are not making the decisions. That stuff that you guys have to know, what the services are needed for this community, what they're willing to pay for, if you can go for extra revenues, and I'm not telling you you have to, I'm just saying there's options and things to look at. So did I answer the question or I go off on a tangent?
Yes. Follow-up. Okay, thank you. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. And so I just wanted to clarify to the mayor, my comment was nothing about you not doing something. I was just an example if you would have. So I don't want you to think that it, it was not directed at you first or anything like that. So, and I definitely really appreciate that, the last, the question that was answered there. And so, and I understand that we have to, we've got to look at this and we've got to make sure that we don't leave ourselves in a deficit later. Like, we don't want to project too low and then have to go back to the commission and say, we've got to find this money somewhere and, and make them approve it. I completely understand that. But I also, and maybe 7 percent's too much, maybe 7 percent was too much, I'll give you that. But I also just feel like we are at a point, I mean, this is a, you know, we are in a fiscal emergency. We have to have people from the auditor state here to help us with our finances. And so, and that's not, no knock on anybody, it's just the way that the current exists. And so if we don't, I feel like as a council body, if we are, do not communicate that we are serious that we have got to reduce costs in the next contract negotiation, then things are just going to slip through. And so I personally am going to, you know, stand by, I'm going to vote no on the fiscal recovery plan because I truly do believe that we have to communicate that this is where we want to be. And in the money that we would take out of those funds or in this plan, it's not like I'm, I'm saying we need to put it into hiring 10 more people. No, it's just going into almost a savings account aside for streets that can be, come back later if it's not, we don't get back to it. And so anyways, I will not comment anymore on this, but I do appreciate listening. I am going to vote no. Thanks.
Let me say one thing.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Hanahan?
Madam President, I, I, this is all I am saying, because contracts are always the real factor. And nobody likes discussing it. And I do appreciate that Mr. Bonzel brought this up in the very beginning of this discussion so people understand that. Thank you.
And I think ultimately you do have the power because you cannot, the mayor cannot pass a contract by himself. That comes to you. And you have the power to say yes or no to those contracts. Mr. Clark?
And I think a lot of those discussions would be in times where we're passing the actual appropriations.
Can you speak up and into your microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Same. And I think a lot of those discussions about cutting and things would come in the contract negotiations as well as anytime we're passing appropriations. So I think, I, I do agree that Mr. Bonzel's done a great job of bringing up these issues, but I think that those discussions would be later on and this is just, you know, kind of a planned forecast or, those discussions can come later.
Mr. Blair?
So just to clarify, what I've been saying is that the current plan is based off of the current and concrete numbers that have been presented to us and that will be presented to the Financial Review Board. Nobody is disagreeing that the contracts need to be discussed and things need to be changed for the future, for us to be in a better place. I completely agree with that. But all I was saying is that the current plan that they've given us is based off of the numbers that are there that they can forecast for the future, not any hypothetical things that we can just put in and then hope that those things come to fruition. That's all I was saying.
Mr. Mayor?
Let it go. I'm done.
No, please, tell us.
No, when, when you said, here's one thing bothers me, James. When you said, well, 7 percent, but let's say this, well, you said 7 percent. Where did you get to 7 percent? And then you turn around and say, well, let's just say less. So, I mean, we're not, this is not a fishing expedition. When you come out with 7 percent, what do you base it on? What is it going to show? So, I mean, it's got to be, and I've learned this the hard way, it's got to be a concrete thing. It's not, when you're dealing with the state, they don't speculate. So it all has to work itself out. That, that's my point, is that forecast it for a reason. When, when, when the auditor forecasts something, he bases it on, he has a sound basis for it, not just to say, well, let's just, let's just say 6 percent, well, let's just say 5 percent, or let's just say. In the real world, I don't think it works that way. And that, that was my concern and I'm, you know.
Mrs. Stickley?
Thank you, Madam President. I do understand Mr. Bonzel's concern. I do also understand that when it comes to contract negotiations, that this could come back and be used against us, essentially, or the city at that time and say, well, at that point, you budgeted into your fiscal emergency plan, therefore the funds are there. So I do appreciate also Mr. Bonzel bringing this up. I understand his concern. I understand how it can backfire, but I also understand how the state auditor's office came up with these numbers.
Thank you, Ms. Stickley. Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And just to, I think that Mrs. Stickley made a great point in that, you know, if I were a, you know, a union negotiator, I would be carrying this, this thing right into the negotiations and I'd be saying, look, the city said that we could spend, you know, $6.5 million on Personnel Services for the fire key. And I'd be saying, so why are you saying that you can't? Council's already said they'll, they'll put that, it's in the fiscal recovery plan. And so, you know, I understand that that's not the intention of the plan. I completely understand that. But I still, though, can, I can just see it happening that, you know, they're going to look at, we're going to have that number looked at and that's going to be the final number. And, you know, I, one thing I just want to note is, I just want to thank both, you know, Chief Wallace and Chief Kramer, because they've both really been looking at their budgets and really trying to find ways that, you know, to, you know, find efficiencies and find savings. And that's awesome, very much appreciate that. But I think we've also just got, we've got to plan for the future. We're, and ensure that we can fund services in the city of Norwood, including our streets, which this plan, you know, if we approve it right now, $0 for new street repaving. And so in my opinion, I just, I don't think that this plan is adequate. I unfortunately, I really am kind of frustrated at how rushed the plan was because even though we've had versions the past two weeks, the one that we are going to vote on today, we just received, you know, right before this meeting. And so, again, I just, you know, I appreciate all the work that's been done. I know the, the obligations that, you know, the city is under in order to get this plan passed. I would just, again, it just concerns me to put on paper the amount that we are saying that we're willing to spend or willing to forecast that we're willing to spend, you know, for negotiations. So again, thank you again, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Muffler?
Would you like to send a disclaimer on the front of this thing, say that this is based on projections that were made by the state auditors and this is not a document that's going to be used to make the budgets in the future and that sort of thing?
It's, I'm sorry, you want to respond?
This is not the auditor state's forecast. This is the city of Norwood's forecast. We are just facilitators. We have put numbers to paper based on information that you all have provided us and wanted to see in this plan. So I just make that clear, that is, this is not our forecast, this is the forecast of the city.
Follow-up?
Yes, Mr.?
We need to pass this before Saturday.
Need to pass it. The Financial Planning and Supervision Commission is meeting 11:30 tomorrow morning for consideration of this. The agenda's been sent out, the notice has been sent out.
Time going out.
Yes.
I just, I understand your concern of just getting this, but the changes that have been made to this over the last three weeks are very minimal. So I, I just want to point that out. Those are very insignificant changes that we have made and we've tried to go over all of that with, with you folks here tonight.
Any other comments? Mrs. Hanahan?
Can you explain how the whole process works about this vote tonight if it passes and we don't have a say?
If a recovery plan is not passed tonight, more than likely, the meeting tomorrow will have to be canceled. I've never had this happen before, a possibility of a no vote. I've never had this happen before, a possibility of a no vote. Also, it will be up to the commission to decide if your general fund appropriations are slashed to 85% of what actual expenditures were last year. I'm not sure how that affects the other funds, I didn't have time to look that up, but that is a possibility.
Thank you, Madam President. He says this has to be done by Saturday? Or does it have to be done by tonight?
Tonight. The actual, the actual due date is July 8th, but the commission set the meeting for the 6th, which is tomorrow.
Because they wanted to make sure it was passed by them and signed, so that we could get it to the state by the 8th.
Okay, then can we come back Friday?
The commission meeting is tomorrow.
The commission meeting is tomorrow, so I, I believe that you're obligated to take a vote at least tonight, and if it fails to pass, then I just do, I have to do.
And then it's the majority of council, is that correct?
This is an emergency, it has to be by ordinance, and so it will require six votes to suspend the rules, and five to pass, because there is an emergency clause in it. Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. First, I'm going to say, I will not stand in the way of the suspending the rules, I will vote for that, just to at least get it to an up or down vote tonight. And then the second thing I will say is, I just have a question, you know, through the chair, to the auditor of state people. What if we pass a plan tonight, and the fiscal commission, like, so what if we were to make the changes? We pass the plan, and then the fiscal commission looks at it, and they decide, no, I'm going to reject this plan, what would happen at that point?
They'd come back to you, and you have 30 days to come up with a new one. I know that, because I researched that, and I'm on the commission, so.
So, I mean, one option would be to, just saying, the option's out there, and I'm not going to push it any further, but the option would be that we could pass with some changes, and if the fiscal commission doesn't approve it, then we'd, then we'd have 30 more days to.
30 days.
30, excuse me, 30 days to get it passed, so just throwing it out there.
Mrs. Hanahan.
We need six for the reading.
You need six votes to suspend the rules, you need five votes to pass it, because there's an emergency clause in it.
Thank you.
Yes. Anna Mary.
So, this does not put you at spending at these levels in the future. It will set your appropriations for 17. We will look at your appropriations that you look at for future years against the recovery plan. If things need to change, this is a living, breathing document, it can and will change, and that includes any and all expenditures and revenue line items that you see here tonight. I just want that clear, because I know I've, I've heard this several times, that gives, that says to people not here for this discussion, the levels that you will spend. This is the intent today. The intent 30 days from now could change, and that would change across the board. Does that make sense? I'm not trying to split hairs here, but I've worked on many, 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 many recovery forecasts in my career with the auditor of state's office. I have never seen one stay the same. We've passed some, and two weeks later, they have changed due to emergencies, or other needs that have come up, that were not known at the time that it was passed by the trustees, council, board of education, whoever that may be. I want that clear, and on the record, that this does not put you at those spending levels. It can, and it will change. When appropriations are passed, they will be looked at to make sure they are within the levels of the recovery plan. So if the recovery plan needs to change, to also include changes with the appropriation, whether it's increase or decrease because of something that has happened, that can and will happen, and has to come back to the vote of council. Does that make sense? I just want that clear. This is not putting it in writing today, and will not change, and cannot change, just so everybody knows. It will, I have seen it many, many times. So, I just don't, I just don't want you to feel like that it's set. It is not set. And please spread the word on that.
Mr. Clark.
Just a comment on that, I think we've all sort of mentioned that it's going to be our goal to continue to see those numbers come down, to find costs, I mean, the mayor's mentioned several projects he's going to work on to save money. So I think it's all our intent to see that these numbers do not stay there, but come down. And I, like, I'm glad you've, you've said that that does not lock us into anything, this is just, this will be a continual work in progress. And I think if we all continue to work together, we're going to find ways to save money and have a much better number later on.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other discussion? Have before you an ordinance, an ordinance approving detailed financial plan for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mupper.
I move to suspend the rules, I have all three readings.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present, voting aye, the motion carries, please have all three readings.
Ordinance approving detailed financial plan for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Ordinance approving detailed financial plan for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Ordinance approving detailed financial plan for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mupper.
I move the ordinance to be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Stickley.
I just wanted to thank the state auditors for all the work that they've done in carrying this plan, obviously, it's not easy. Also, for, I think all my colleagues for a very vivacious discussion tonight. I, for one, will be voting for this, for no other reason than, other than, I don't want to see the general fund budget decreased slash to 85% if it is not passed.
Thank you. Mrs. Hanahan.
I want to thank the state auditors for the same reasons. I don't want to put that on the list.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know how much, I'm curious how much that, the 85%, it affects things, because right now, we're already $2 million in the red in the general fund, because we borrowed out of other funds, like, some money that's not in the general fund, we have spent it, and we've taken it out of fund, other funds that are there. So I would actually be curious to hear from the auditor of state's office, like, if it were cut to 85%, do we get that money back eventually if we do pass the plan?
If your appropriations are cut, they'll be cut for, I'm not sure how long they would be cut, but just know that you're just kicking the can down the road, basically, in your general fund, so, and that's kind of what got the city into trouble anyway. You didn't have enough appropriations to pay for what the actual bills were. So I can't, I don't have a calculator to do the math, you, you could look at what the actual expenditures for 2016 were, multiply it out by 85%, and that is what you would be limited to, and then we would come back to this setting again, and have to redo this.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
No.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
By a vote of 6 to 1, the motion carries. We have no absent members. Mr. Mupper.
I move adjourned.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present, voting aye, the motion carries, this meeting is hereby adjourned.